All right, so let's call the October fifteenth, twenty fifteen, meeting of the Kingston Springs Board of Commissioners. Please rise in base of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you can call it roll.
Corum.
Here.
Landline.
Here.
Roommate.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. The minutes have been circulated and everyone's had a chance to look them over. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Any changes to the minutes? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda's been, if you all have a chance to look over the agenda. I would like to add one item to that under new business, item nine B, appointment of Kevin Allgaier to the planning commission. Do we have a motion to?
Did you say that was?
Is Kevin Allgaier? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, all right. Announcements from commissioners, we'll go and start with you this time, Gary. Paul?
Good.
You had a fun time at Park and Park?
Very nice to do.
Very good. We had our last farmer's market, that was, it was a little bit slow in the very last one, but it was a good season, so I think you had another eventful year of the farmer's market, hopefully we'll have even better one next year.
All right, community input, if you could, Scott, come up and state your name and your address.
Anything, anything?
I just second your farmer's market, I think it was a special year. Last week was pretty weak.
It was.
But there's a lot going on, but I think it's good to do it twice a month, as long as whoever supervises it, as long as they're good at doing it twice a month.
That was Maria, huh? And Scott getting out there to get the science out there for us every week, too. I appreciate that. All right, the consent agenda, we can go ahead, Mike, and start with the city management report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess first, under my report, this is a rather truncated meeting and report as well, but we had a conversation about property maintenance and code enforcement last month, and we wanted to give you an update on that. The city attorney and the building official and I sat together and kind of discussed the list of, I think it was eleven or so properties that came up last week, and there were some follow-up on, I think, four of them. The first was four seventeen Mount Pleasant Road, this is the Audi property. We were a little confused as to the legal status of that property, and we're gonna get some follow-up on it. It may be best for us to kind of sit on some action on that property for a little bit. The next was four twenty Mount Pleasant Road, this was across the street, the building that's behind the elementary school without the siding. And we do not have anything on the books. It's boarded up. In terms of reaching out to the property owner, asking, hey, can you put some siding on it and make it a little more attractive? We can do that, but there's nothing that we can enforce against them. The next one is the hotel property. We think it is time to send a certified letter to to the owners of that property, request them to board up. I think we've established that there's a way forward for us to do that, so we'll be looking to do that, I think, sometime this month or next. Three forty Love Street is the lot at the bottom of Love and Maple. There had been some progress made on that, the grass had been cut on that lot, and I think some things had actually moved, some of the tool closets and such. At least changed position. We were gonna send maybe a second, a second letter requesting all that stuff to be gone before we kind of take action. They had done some things, so we're gonna send a second letter on that and hope to see some more progress.
So, so what does us taking action look like in that situation?
It would be a site, a fee charged.
Well, see, the owner.
Inside the court.
The owner wants it moved to, he's probably right.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I don't think, I need to send a letter. I need to provide a copy of the letter that he had sent to the person.
He sent it in.
The last thing is something that, the last thing that we discussed was something that I think Jennifer might want to handle in the legal report, but it was just an ordinance kind of giving us more leeway and collecting on cleanup costs. So, to count it as a special tax assessment rather than just a lien. So she can provide a little more insight on that, I think Ashen City can find it.
Yes, Ashen City does it, and Pleasant View does it, and in essence, what happens is, if you have a provision in your ordinance, state law will let you add that as a special tax assessment, and so what happens is, it's better than a lien. Because a lien, you have to wait till they sell it or do something else. On the other, when you get ready to enforce taxes, it's added to the taxes, and if they don't pay it, then you can foreclose on it. So it gives us a lot more to, so, you know, if that sounds like something y'all are interested in, then I'll have that ready for next month. Because I think that would be a lot more beneficial than just putting a lien, or maybe even signing it in the court, or whatever, so it's a lot better way to get your money back.
Okay. The next thing, under my report, was just a residence survey. I had talked with the mayor about this just briefly, but it may be a good time to try and put some sort of community opinion survey out in the field. Typically, you want to give a number of months for something like this to be sent out and to be, you know, come back. It may be a good time to do it, one, because the tax bills went out today, and so people are gonna be thinking about us. They're gonna be stopping by City Hall to make payment, that sort of thing, so people may be a little more civically minded over the next couple of months. Additionally, it's always a good time to think about, you know, what you're paying for and what you're getting out of it, so. It's also several months before our retreat, and it might be good to have some of that data to base next year's budget decisions and operational decisions off of some kind of data-driven approach. What I had done was the second and third page of this report was just a sample survey that I had put together, something to think about in terms of the different questions that might be asked. Some of them are open-ended, some of them are just checking a box, and I think there's also, the last page is like a demographic sheet just to make sure that, you know, we're getting the kind of responses that are representative of the town. There's also, I think the very last question is making sure that people live inside the property or inside the city limits, so them listing just their property address. Obviously interested in individuals and their answers, individual answers, but we want to make sure they live inside the city. This is something that would go a long way in pairing up with our performance measures that we put in this year's budget document, and it's also something that I think there may be some JEC funding for. I talked to Darryl Phillips, and I think Pleasant View was actually looking to do the same thing during the same timeframe. So I think I would ask if this is something you're interested in, and we can play with the questions, and I need to run it through staff and just make sure that, you know, everything that they're interested in is on here, and certainly if you guys are interested in anything. If you, if you want to go put a survey in the field, I would ask for a motion to pursue JEC funding to pay for the postage for this.
Go mail it to everybody who's in the city.
Or trying to figure that out, yes. And of course, we, I assume we'll have returned postage on it as well, right? And there's a, you know, I'm sure we could ask for that. I'm sure we could ask for that, we'd have to pull up an envelope and pre-stamped it and send it out. Sure. There's also two other things to think about. One is, there may be a small community of folks that are Spanish speakers, that it may be good to try and put this into Spanish for some folks, and also maybe put it on like a Survey Monkey type online collection. Other things to think about as well, I haven't had a ton of time to work on this, but it's a draft. We, we think that there's one thousand and forty-eight residences in the town, and so you think, you know, a half a dollar to send something out, maybe a half a dollar to send something back, you know, that's the funding that we'd be asking for from the JEC. And he seemed, Darryl seemed to indicate that it's appropriate, and that Pleasant View is something.
So, so do we have a motion to pursue this? Allow Mike to pursue, have, seeking funding to do this through the JEC board?
Make a motion that he tries to pursue the funding for a full dollar per resident. With a stamp going out, a stamp going in, coming back. Hopefully they'll, won't cross that, put something else on the table. Good luck on that.
Second.
Worth a shot.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If, if there's something in the meantime, I'm gonna run this past staff and just make sure that all their programs are covered and represented the way that they want. If there's anything that you think that is missing, or that you want to see highlighted or changed around, just let me know. We'll obviously be working on the kinks and trying to make sure that this goes out appropriately. Hopefully getting it out the door sometime around the first of the month.
I do like the idea of having an online Survey Monkey set up also.
Just the next thing, our couple of updates. The JEC board has not met yet, they meet on the twenty-ninth, they put a meeting back due, I think, the governor's conference this week. There were two issues, I think, that I had talked with Darryl about putting on their agenda. One was these, this residence survey, the other one was getting some sort of software for the online tracking of permits and billing, you know, applications, that sort of thing. It's something that our building officials really asked for, it's something that Ashen City and the county already offer. We're trying to see if we can expand that service to both P-Room, ourselves, and Pleasant View. You know, there's this attitude, or this, this atmosphere that we need to be more business-friendly and trying to, you know, make all of our services somewhat similar across the county. This is probably a good first step, and doing it through the JEC, just like GIS, might be a good idea, so. So I know that that will be on the agenda for JEC at the end of the month. Planning Commission did meet this month, they will not meet next month. There was a T-Dot presentation, and there were no submittals. Just some things that are coming up, we're working on website, and hope to have, be online with it by the end of November, sometime, maybe just after Thanksgiving. We're also sitting down with the Parks Board in early November to discuss benchmarking our park system, and what that means is just making sure that all of our policies are in line, making sure that all of our assets are in line, and it's a way of making our park system comparing it with other jurisdictions. Makes us more attractive for grants, so that's, that's what we're doing there. There's also some things that Public Works is working on, we'll talk about in November. Docked items, we'll have some grant stuff before you over the next couple, over the next couple weeks, both for T-Dot, multimodal, for Lydon Hills Road, and for Safe Routes to School, for Harpethue Trail. There's also a kind of a time-sensitive thing, our General Assembly is getting ready to come back to session, and if we wanted to pursue hotel motel tax from a city standpoint, now is the time to request an act of the General Assembly to do that. I've talked with the mayor, and we've talked with some folks around middle Tennessee about, about the issue, but the first step is for us to take a position on it, a request on it, and ask for the General Assembly to grant us permission to do it. There's also this potential second reading of what we're talking about tonight, and then also the first reading of an ordinance to clean up, or assess cleanup fees as special tax assessment. Also, just wanna, and this is kind of late-breaking, but we had our kickoff meeting for multimodal on Wednesday afternoon, the ninth of November, at six o'clock, we're gonna have a public meeting to figure out what that looks like and what we want to do to Lydon Hills Road. You'll see it advertised, I'll be out talking with the business owners a lot between now and then, and we think we're having it at Heritage Bank in their lobby after hours, so we think that's where it is, but it'll obviously be advertised, and we'll figure that out, so. With that, you also have department reports, you also have the monthly finance report, and unless there's any comments from Debbie or questions from any of you.
Any legal updates, Mr. Commissioner? Oh, sorry, we haven't approved the consent, we only approved the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, legal.
A couple of things, just to kind of follow up on the codes in this property, the four, four one seven Mount Pleasant Road. This property is tied up in an estate, and was gonna kind of find out, allegedly there may be a ten-year lien on the property. And this property may be that taxes have not been paid, and Waterbrook handles the tax sale, and we may, it may be from a better position just to let that go to tax sale and be auctioned off, so we're gonna kind of look at that and see what a timeframe would be on that and come back to the recommendation for the council. And then, three one four West Kingston Springs Road, just to kind of let you know, that has a special, it is on the historical register, and as such, we're very limited on what we can do with that, but we can ask them to board up the windows. So we don't have as much latitude with that property as we would something else because of it having historical signification. So, to kind of bring you up on that. The only other thing I have, Waterbrook and I both attended, what was Friday, this past Friday, the, it was a joint program between county attorneys, city attorneys, and Metro. And one of the things that I've been dealing with already, that was enacted, it was a law that went into effect back in July, is dealing with subdivisions. As you know, of course, we've had lots of subdivisions, the developer comes in, the developer bellies up, profiles bankrupt, here the property's foreclosed, now he hasn't finished it, and then you've got roads that are not completed, whatever the circumstances may be. So the legislature came in and changed the law and said that if you're gonna be doing a development, that building permits will not be issued until later a bond is done, or later a credit for the infrastructure, which would be the roads. So that's just, that's kind of, that's a big burden on the city, and I don't know how many, if Kingston Springs has a lot of developments or subdivisions out there that are halfway done, that somebody's walked away from or been foreclosed on, but that's something, I was gonna talk to our building official about that, just to make sure that we're not issuing permit, and that's, and unfortunately, we kind of are the bad guys in that circumstance, and you may have residents and stuff that are not happy about that, but we cannot issue building permits until they do a later credit or bond. Just kind of something in case, that is something that comes up that we have to address to pajama the loop with it, and I think that's all I have.
All right, we have no unfinished business. Onto new business, first reading of ordinance fifteen dash zero one zero, amending section fourteen dash one oh one of the municipal code ordinances. Jennifer, could you go ahead and jump in on that one, too?
Sure. This was, I think it had been discussed, Mike had had a meeting with the utility director. Thank you. To try and have more of a cohesiveness, you know, a lot of times, somebody comes and they get a building permit, since we don't, this utility is not down in the city, I guess maybe there's been some lost communication, and just so that typically everybody's on board, the planning commission had thought that this would be a good idea, and so this is to add someone. State law in your charter allows you to add someone as an ex officio member, so they would have no voting rights. They could certainly speak at the meeting, but when it came to making a vote, they would not be able to do that. So the ordinance is to add a, and it would be whoever Second South Tuna Utility District chose, but to have them as an ex officio member of the planning commission. And that's a recommendation from the planning commission.
All right, do we have a motion to approve ordinance fifteen dash zero one zero? So that we can have some discussion? Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss it. First of all, I don't see any reason to appoint somebody from the water district to our planning commission. Any reason for it, they're a rock's throw from City Hall, and no more projects we have if he can't walk up there, send an email, and besides this, that would be putting a person that says the director, and that he lives in White Bluff, I'd be putting somebody in White Bluff on our planning commission. And to me, if he has no vote, let him come to this meeting if he wants to find out what's going on, or he can walk a half a block up the street and then ask City Hall what's going on, or we can send him, we can send an email and we can send it to him. But why, he's not gonna have any authority to just recommend, let him just come on volunteer, come up there if he wants it, and listen, and he'll find out what's going on. Come to the planning commission and just listen, you know? If you think he's gonna come when we put him on the board, he has no say-so, so if he comes now, if we don't put him on the board, he could still come, and putting him on the board, is that gonna make him come ever meeting? He don't have to, he has no say-so, and he don't live in our city limits. We've got two people on, on the planning commission that live in the city, and besides that, y'all don't know the history. We've tried several times to get people on their board so we could have a better close thing, what they're going on, when they're gonna tear up a road and stuff, and they basically laughed at us, and we tried a couple of times to put somebody on their board, and as a matter of fact, I went to a couple of meetings, and I got the feeling that they didn't even like us being at their meetings, a lot less being on their board. And so that's my say-so about it.
And, you know, something that I discussed with Mike after this was the fact that there is some history there. Mike and I've had some, some conversation about that history, and a possible solution that, I mean, your boys are all valid, Gary, it's true, they're not gonna be able to vote, so I guess it's just to give them some sort of, like, kind of some semi-official status to be here and speak, but something that Mike and I have been working on is, you know, making them also agree to do, extend the same courtesy to the city and allow someone from the city to sit as an ex officio member of their board as well, if this happens, if we're going to do this, I think.
Mr. Mayor? Just to kind of give you the genesis of all this is, we've had, my discussion with Bill was kind of rooted in all this development that we had had lately in the Dollar General, you know, we had had things to go through planning commission that have been approved, that we've had to go back and kind of spot correct, or even had to run back through planning commission because of the availability of water or what was there, and we didn't know it, or we didn't have that kind of background. So my, kind of my prerogative as a administrator was to figure out a way of getting the water utility on the front end of these development conversations. We had Dollar General that was passed, their site plan was approved by the planning commission, they had to come back and have the entrance redone, the building relocated, because there was a trunk line literally directly under the building, so they had to move the location of the building on the site. We had a subdivision request that afterwards, we kind of fumbled around with trying to figure out where the hydrant was gonna go. So it's, it's less of a political thing, you know, from my vantage point, and from Bill's recommendation, and more of a, how do we work the water department into our development conversations? In the planning commission, when we, when we talked about it, the town planner made an excellent recommendation in that when I'm receiving things from people asking to be put on the planning commission agenda, you know, I'm getting the paper, we've always taken paper, but I have asked for electronic documents ever since I've been here, electronic plans. It is so easy to just CC the water department on that email, I'm sending it to the attorney, I'm sending it to the planner, just send it to the water department at the same time and say, hey, this is what the submittal is, do you have any, do you have any issues with it? So I think that's, that's a really easy.
So does that solve most of the problems, though?
From my perspective, it does.
Without, and that would, that would be, I guess, without even doing this.
Well, whose fault is it that Dollar General didn't know where the water line was? It'd sound like to me to be Dollar General. If I was gonna build it, I'd find out where the water was. I wouldn't leave it up to the planning commissioner or somebody to decide where the water line is.
You would think it would be in the survey.
Yeah. If I was building a billion, I should want to know where the water line was, and not, and, you know, whoever drew the plans up should have knew. That is not, I don't mean to say I've got a hard feelings toward them, but, you know, we had a lot of times that we asked them, we got, I had a house that I was building one time on top of the hill up there, off of Mount Pleasant Road, that caught fire, and there was no water, they just, they opened the fire hydrant and it dripped water. And so we went around and found, they had a lot of fire hydrants, just all they did was drip water. They didn't, they had no pressure, and then we tried to get them to help us and work and get more pressure to these, to these hydrants, and their answer was, we're not in the firefighting business, and, and that ended that. So they finally, we've worked on that, they painted them different, and I don't know what, how we stand on all that now, but I think they finally worked all that out, but they, they weren't very helpful, helping us with that, they just thought that was sick. We're not in the firefighting business, we don't care. We're in making potable water, whatever that word they say, potable drinking water, they're not in the firefighting business, so. I just, I mean, not that we shouldn't get along, I agree that, you know, but if, I don't see any reason that he can't send emails back and forth, or if he's, if he wants to know if they're building something, walk up there and ask, y'all got anything going on? Or if he wants to come to planning mission, let him come, they're invited. They don't have to put him on the board. He don't live, he lives in White Bluff.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to, I guess throw this out there, they don't have any representation from the city of Kingston, from the town of Kingston Springs on the board. I think they've got one P-Room resident that sits on their board, and two are county members.
Okay, here I've got a question. The plats, when the plat, the board's recorded, and I assume someone, the building inspector signs off, just second, do they not sign off on them? Do they not review them before they sign off on them? I mean, that's, I mean, when you bring up the Dollar General and all of that, if they're signing off on them, they should be reviewing them to make sure that, you know, if there's not a fire hydrant in the proper location to, of course, if they're not giving proper flow for fire hydrants, I mean, that's, they're not, they're not in the firefighting business, but they are supposed to have appropriate water pressure.
Due to the, when we built the house, we just built, we were required, my builder had to go before them and get, get them to sign off because of the sprinkler system, we had to have a certain amount of flow, so we had to jump it up a little bit, put more flow to it. But it was done through them before we could get the county to, you know, at that time, we had to pay the county tax plus the city tax, it was, we had a pretty good size impact fee, so that's what's normally done in other areas, they have to sign off before you get permits. You know, because like in this situation of the Dollar General, I'm kind of thinking, well, water line was existing, why was it not shown somewhere? Why was that not a question by someone?
Right.
I mean, that's just a normal, you know, I mean, that's just an old process, and, you know, I hated that they had to. And, you know, I hated that they had to move the building, but, you know, I don't, I don't think they should've closed on the property without having all that in place and checked out prior to. So, kinda like Gary, I mean, you know, if they wanna get along fine, if they don't wanna get along fine. But this ex officio, I don't know what it's going to really accomplish. I don't know.
Well, you know, it sounds like you have some things worked out as far as the electronics submittal and that would solve a lot of the problems. I think at this point, you know, the only thing that this, this ordinance would get solved is maybe, and I think it would only happen in the sense that they extend the same courtesy to us. It could spread some goodwill between the two. So maybe, maybe we can, uh, we can work better together in the future. Now, you know, since this doesn't pass, I, that, that could, it's, costs some, 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 some hurt feelings. I don't know. I don't, you know, that's, that's my only, would be my only concern, uh, you know, if we haven't worked out some, some other method, but, um, I don't know.
I think I'm in agreement with Gary. I think as long as it's electronic, I, I don't see any need for anybody to sit on the board.
You know, he could walk out on the porch down and call you first, say, Mike, I wanna ask you a question. You step out the door, hey, Mike, y'all got anything going on?
You need a camera this morning?
That's actually.
There's a lot lost in translation anyway, right?
To the train. Train comes.
That'd be more messed up water line with a train gun.
Well, we have a, uh, we have a, uh, first and a second. All in favor? Close? Fails. All right. Then of course, the, uh, the, the second item that we have today is the appointment of Kevin Allgood to the planning commission. Worked on contacting quite a few people and, and, uh, and, and some folks that even said they were interested in doing this. And then they, they seemed to lose interest. And, uh, and Mr. Allgood was, was very excited and willing to serve the community. And I'm, I'm excited to, anytime I find somebody that's excited to, to step up and serve the community, so, so.
Can you tell us the, I mean, do you see where he's living?
Um, well, on Facebook, he's friends with your wife and your son. But he, he lives.
I don't know him.
Yeah, he lives over. He, he lives, he lives in Harpeth Meadows, so he.
You're talking about Keith Allgood?
Yeah, Ke- oh, no, I said Ke- uh, it's Kevin. I meant Keith Allgood. Yeah, Keith.
Ain't what you said.
I'm, I'm, I, I said the wrong thing. I couldn't read my own name. Yeah, Keith Allgood, so.
What you're asking for, I'll tell you that. You wanna know the history of that?
I don't really.
Okay, I don't wanna get into that. I know this, but, you know, he, he, he's tried, he's come to City Hall himself. And the water that ran out on, in his yard during the flood, he, when the flood happened, he was up here ready to kill people because his yard was flooded and his other people lost their houses. And, uh, uh, and at first he tried to, he talked about suing people and he tried to blame it. Then he got into it with David Gaddis that lives, uh, one house in between that he, cause he had Mike Byers in there to, to cut out, put a, a new, uh, culvert in. And, and he was, got into it with David about, uh, uh, about running water. It was going to his house and wasn't going, uh, you know, wasn't going through the sewers and then it was coming in his yard. But, you know, it, it just, and then he didn't come up to his house during the flood. Didn't come to his house. And, uh, uh, he was in my daughter's class. I know, but you didn't, but you didn't, you said Kevin Allgood.
Right, yes.
And, uh, uh, so last week I was asking who that was. He was also a big UT fan, but. He goes to my church, uh, uh, the church I go to, not my church. But, uh, uh, anyway, that's, uh, that's fine. He may make, but he's a, and I think he's a, puts you to sleep, is what he does.
He puts you to sleep.
And it's he yelling.
Yeah, something like that. What he's wanting or sister. No, cause he's, I bet he's had, he's had two or three rounds of lard, big rounds. And he had them with Tony Campbell. He's had them with a whole lot of people. But, uh.
You're not scared.
No. And he, he's a, he's a really upset now because, you know, they, they're coming down and building house between him and there and it, but kinda cut his property off a little bit. And, but, but, but the thing about it, Carl Francis and, 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 uh, whoever offered, uh, Keith and, and, uh, you know who I'm talking about, uh, there's another house.
Ancho.
Ancho. Uh, he offered them the chance to buy that piece of property before he sold it to somebody who had a house on. Uh, but it needs setbacks and everything, but, but, uh, I know he's not happy about that either. But that's a different subject and, and whatever y'all decide. I mean, you don't decide it if you.
Well, yeah. Well, it's just one vote.
All right. Glad you found someone.
Next.
All right. Surplus items. Do we have any surplus items or spontaneous? No items for surplus. Any, anything for other discussion? Anyone likes to, Gary, do you have any? Any other discussion items?
Could you destroy that tape?
Okay, I gave you all the signs.
Oh, yes, yes, we have this signed rule. Actually, Debbie, you wanna, you filled me out and you probably explained everyone else.
This is the same company that put all the signs on City Hall. And I had contacted them and, cause on that building, we have the one that just says City Hall on it to see if they could maybe reduce the lettering and add Tony's name to that one, but they're telling me that can't be done. So I've asked them to price changing it like this. And they were supposed to get back with me by today with the cost and they didn't. So, but I asked for a price to just replace this one. And if it's too expensive to price one that would be smaller, that we could put on the front of the building facing the railroad track. So, but they didn't get back with me today, so I don't have prices, but I, I do have.
Home Depot sells just others. I mean, just Tony.
I was gonna say to Bob Sanders, I think Bud Lighter could make a better. This Bud and Tony Campbell are for you.
Hopefully I'll have some number for you next month.
I would like to, to thank you for the financial. Um, this report is very helpful to me. It's, it gives me, uh, an insight before I get here as to the condition of the finances and, and I think that's really important. Especially when some citizens might ask a question or say something to hear on the street. You can always, we have something to, to show to them that they don't really know what they're talking about, so. So I feel very good about this. Thank you, Reverend, much for doing it. And your notes about the percentages, that also gives us, you know, understanding as to why, you know, maybe we haven't got it in the budget yet. You know, that we're expecting it or, you know, whatever.
If you have any questions about that, when Debbie sends it out, you always feel free to shoot her an email or give her a call and ask her, ask her about it, so.
That's good.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Gary, so.